Okay, we're back in office session, we're gonna go back to informational items. We need host back school breakfast.
I understand it's a tradition that the board hosts that on August, uh, first day of teachers' back, so we'll ask you to take action on that and whatever.
And what time do we plan that for?
It's up to you this morning.
Seven forty-five is when it typically starts.
Seven forty-five. Okay, move on to U S D two ninety-eight classified employee handbook.
We just have for you a copy of the proposed, we'll ask you to approve that at the August for the board meeting. So you have it to look at and to think about and if you have questions or things you want to be modified or anything. Relating to that. Advanced hard copy to look at, not something you have to give at school.
Thank you. And next we have distribution of proposed budget information.
You have a phenomenal office staff. Between Mandy and Nancy, they had the budget ready for us to take to Dell Dennis and Roy Peters to look at. And TJ came in and signed it on Friday night after Nancy made a couple of modifications that the State Department said to make. And we got in the paper, the hearing for the budget will be before our board meeting on August fifth at six forty-five. We'll be able to do that and then you'll be able to prove it that night at the meeting. And you have the budget to look at if you have questions, to call me or Nancy and we can chat with you about why and what we did. And Mandy will be back next week, so you can call and ask for Mandy too. Because she, Nancy stood beside her and had her put it all in and talked about where you got things and had her do that work until she kept her leave on her vacation. And she knows that in the future that will be not an easy time for her to take vacation. So you can look at that and feel free, do feel free to call if you have questions.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to discussion items. We've got the L E S H vac window project change order.
Do you want to call, do you want to call Fred now?
I'm probably not for that one, we'll do it on the next one. With E P M this one, we'll do the next questions.
So you're, this, this part's a-
Because this one is the one that you already proved that it can reroute it, because we're talking about the reroute of the bank system, right? Because there's nothing else in the change order currently, correct?
That's correct.
So this is just a change order for the squeeze for the material and labor?
And that is in the packet, four thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty cents.
And it's unfortunate, but I wanna make sure to have, I have a board consensus with that, that we wanna make sure we do it right the first time.
Well, the concern is that breaking a side in there being too low, that's-
From the stage?
From the stage?
Yeah, that's my concern.
That it's down by the curtain area?
Yes, if it could be up on the ceiling, just like the other side is, um, I think it's better here. So, refresh my memory, what all of you guys say was concerning with speaker?
The brace for the basketball?
I think the brace could be modified, I think we can get around that. But the speakers?
The main thing was the speaker, and that he's pulling wires right now, he's installing it right now. And that would have to be rerouted to each side at an extra cost also. And the brackets, the engineers that were there, they were talking about the length of the telescope, because it has an automatic stop at the end. And when you telescope out, you need to have enough rod inside to extend all the way up to the ceiling. And that's kinda calculated on the angle. And Anthony and I was talking about dropping down the bracket, so actually move down further down and have it extend from that area. But that engineer that was present, what's his name?
Did he like that idea?
He said that he doesn't see it's gonna work, so.
There'd not be enough angle to lift it up all the way maybe, is that what he?
Yeah.
So if the sound system wasn't an issue or we were okay with having to have him reroute that, would that help?
It would still be the bracket issue.
It's, it's, the bracket would still be an issue?
It's more a bracket issue.
It's more the bracket than, okay.
Ben can, something like that was his name, I did not bring that to mind.
You said dropping down the ceiling one you talked about, did you talk about dropping down the one behind the goal? The bottom of the goal where that bracket mounts onto. Currently it mounts on directly on the goal. Little spacer sticking straight back and mount there and then as it goes up, it doesn't have to be clear up, it can stay on just a bit. But-
You're talking about moving the, the bottom bracket on over to the top of the ceiling? You're talking about moving that bottom on the, on the goal?
Move the one on the ceiling closer to the goal and the one on the bottom of the goal, instead of having it come right to the back of the goal, bring it away from the back of the place.
Have it not come out this way and then it would be like this?
So the one that goes up to the ceiling, it's actually lower, lower underneath everything. I'm just concerned that that hanging that low in the stage area is, um, gonna be an eyesore. I know we don't have the choices, but I know we're country for time, we are country for time, but we wanna do it right.
Yeah. The other option and the principle, and to pretend again, answer this one. If we don't have the back support bracket right now, until we figure something out, do we back support bracket? Is it in Mr. Lang for a simple metal shell? Would that be feasible?
I cannot speak to that, I have, I have no clue.
When would that goal be used? When would those two goals be used?
I asked, we did call, and the P E teacher says that she uses those goals at different times during the school year, not even just for basketball, but they are part of what they do.
They'll be down on this floor?
Yeah, so, so they can't be, yeah, it's not just a basketball season time.
Because the main, the main thing is they will swing down and you can lift it up still. Even with a back bracket, the main thing is you can't slam down, you can hang off the rim. Um, which I know elementary kids hopefully, well, I wish they did. Would then we do some P E activities until we figure out the bracket solution?
What she said was, I often have thirty kids or more, so that must be where they combine the two rooms.
Correct.
And she said, and I need the space and I need the, the goals for what we're doing. I didn't ask, she said, it's not necessarily basketball, there are other activities we use goals for, and I didn't ask her to expand that. I was just trying to-
Because Anthony and I was discussing about that too, moving the bracket, and he thought it was feasible and I thought so too, but the engineer there said that he couldn't see it happening. So that's what I'm asking, probably you were asking too, can we just take the bracket away, mount that, and then figure out the bracket after?
I see what he means.
The, uh, someone said there, there's an extra five hundred dollar fee of this adding another elbow or changing something from street?
Yeah.
Uh, lowering the existing elbow, is that right?
No, no. You, instead of going straight up to this right now, they're gonna turn to the side and you need one more elbow.
Yeah, yeah.
Trying that elbow, so.
So the existing one is still gonna be used, it's just gonna be turned?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay.
And they have to lower, they have to lower the-
And then they're gonna have to lower something?
The, the bit that it sits in, so that it's lower.
Unless we, unless we back, back-
Unless we keep it, keep the same height, so there could be a little savings here, but, um, it's just a concern.
Yeah. No, I think it's, it's a valid concern and I personally think that we can figure out a way to raise that up later on and still be able to use it, because when I hang down, you can still toss things in the baskets.
High pencil.
Because you're not-
Cable, cable.
Yeah, cable keepers, don't swing in too much.
Hello kids.
Okay, any other concerns in regards to that one? So, uh-
So does-
This is gonna be an action item tonight if we wanna proceed with them rerouting this. And we can also decide if we want to bring it there and we'll just figure out the bracket later and that way they can proceed.
I would agree, but that sounds, I'd rather do it right than sit here in a year and say we wish we'd done it differently than the way that we did. And I kind of like his plan. And then if we can figure out the bracket later, that would make more sense.
Yeah.
I mean, unless I don't understand it well.
I'm afraid the public can't see that.
As an eyesore.
And if we can-
It's still gonna be hanging down, but not as much.
But it'll be same as the other one.
Yeah.
Versus-
It'll be that thirty-six inches.
What's this one doing, her down here or when that's-
Right, it'll be less of an eyesore.
It's made of a covered wood panel, but-
Yes, yes.
Sure, it will be, be visible.
If we can do that, I would like that.
Well, I think, yeah.
Well, I'd like it better.
I certainly think Mr. Lang can figure something out too. He can get it from him, see what he thinks. Look, we definitely need to proceed with this, because we're gonna make-
Yeah.
Yes, sure.
We'll need to get something done.
Get it done.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? Good point David, thank you. So we're gonna move on here to this, the E P M contract and information. And I'm gonna, I was hoping Street planning would be here too tonight, but he's not present, so I'm gonna call Fred Malakot and ask him about this, because I do have some questions and concerns in regards to, um, this contract that we obtained. Well, we have since already have a contract signed that includes all this. Uh, so I'm just gonna get him on the line if that's okay with the board?
Yep.
It's an old fashioned phone.
I think the speaker's better than we'll use it so far.
Hit send TJ.
The button underneath.
Okay, where's the sound?
This is Fred.
Hi Fred, this is TJ from U S D two ninety-eight Board of Education.
Yes, sir.
We are in a board meeting right now and we have you on the speaker phone here with the board members, superintendent, the principal, and the meeting president here. And I just have some questions for you in regards to the E P M contract and information about-
Okay.
What is going on there, because I know initially when we started all this process, it was a recommendation that you sign the contract with Street as general contractor and communication would occur between E P M and Street to complete this process. And can you enlighten me a little bit more about what is actually, why is this occurring, so to speak?
Okay, well, uh, two things. The E P M was working directly then for Street and you, I don't know if you are experienced with E P M that much, but they typically don't work for a contractor, they work for the owner. And then we talked about removing the E P M system totally. And there so was some communication issues between the contractor and E P M. So, uh, it was discussed and E P M can remove their system better if they just work for you than they can for the contractor and I help direct them what's going on. And so, uh, I think they left the price in because they didn't know what all the street had done. And they've now since looked at it, they're gonna have a team out there Monday morning to remove what they need to, but also to keep in place anything that you might use down the road if you decide to put them in. And then they're also gonna control the exterior lights, water heaters, and the new freezer, monitor the new freezer. So that way they don't have to remove all of the system like we have discussed.
Okay.
And so we're just taking out that whole sum and then E P M is gonna have some charges though, but it, it won't be the sixty-four five, I could pretty well tell you that.
Well, I was gonna say that one concern I have for Fred is, I know when we discussed this in the past with Cat Robertson, we were talking about separate contract, contracts, we're strongly encouraged that we, we, uh, since they communicate all the time, they know each other's timeline, it would be more efficient. And we signed the contract for the sixty-four thousand five hundred and also in the sixty-four five, sixty-four five, uh, holy goodness, sixty-four thousand five hundred. You know, inclusive of that was removal of the electrical wire conduit, but also each individual control that controlled each room for the bar units. And as you recall, we had this conversation too, in regards to leaving it in place and we contacted the fire marshal, state fire marshal, who said that we can leave the conduit and electrical wiring in place. So-
Correct.
And you stated it would be a credit due to the district on that sixty-four five thousand, on the amount that, less the amount of removal, since we're not gonna remove everything.
Right, and that's, but that's why I'm telling you that it won't be the sixty-four five, the E P M, because they're only gonna remove whatever is necessary and also keep intact, um, what they can if you decide to put their system in later.
Okay. Now, the contract they sent us has a number sixty-five thousand, not exceed that. Now, my concern here too is with the individual control was gonna come out of Street out of that sixty-four thousand five hundred.
The Street's contract, did you see the other piece of paper I sent later? Where Street is going to credit you off of, and I don't have it in front of me, but it was nine, nine twenty-nine or something and some change. And then it'll be, I have their pay request number two. And if you approve that tonight, I'll take that off the top and it'll be eight sixty-four, whatever that number turns out to be that, uh, is in Street's contract. Then the sixty-four five will be used to pay E P M for what they have to remove and then can remain.
So you're saying removing sixty-four five out of Street's contract?
Right, it's gone, it'll be gone.
So, what, what about the individual controls that is included in that, that Street was installing to each bar unit?
Okay, that was already in their contract to have, uh, individual thermostats with E P M, because the units are ordered with thermostats.
Okay, and of course that's not what that, the contract has stated, but, um, also I had a question, in their contract, uh, it was handed in there by Kathy on the A one for Street, that the credit charge order and reduction would be is in the, the forthcoming. Uh, but I know E P M hasn't completed a job yet, um, in regards to that. You can understand our concern too here, Fred, that we set this contract in good faith, everything was gonna be taken care of, everything was, um, gonna be completed. We have a set amount of dollars and now suddenly we're splitting up contracts with different vendors.
Right, but you're gonna end up paying less money. And I said it would take, come out in the first change order, but I knew this communication issue was looming in there, so I didn't take it out in the first change order, I waited and it'll be on the second, second pay request. Uh, I said change order, but first pay request, I said we'd take it out, but it'll be on the second pay request. That the nine, yeah, there's the amount in front of you, the nine twenty-nine?
Yes, the three seven, four seven.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, alright, and then there'll be sixty-four five to heat out. And so Street's contract will be eight, eight and something.
Eight sixty-four, eight seventy.
Okay.
Right, eight sixty-four and some change. And then we'll take the sixty-four five and have E P M work. And again, they won't spend that much money taking and leaving, leaving in and up so that you could put your system in back and they still will control the outside lights and the water heaters and the new freezer.
And they're leaving the wiring, um, into, is currently, currently going to each individual room for any possible future connection?
Right.
We have a question here, what will they be removing then, if, um?
Okay, there were some conduit and wire that went over to each room air conditioner and that will be removed back to the wall. And, uh, there are the wire, conduits we reused to repeat the bar unit.
Okay, it was my understanding that it's already, has been removed on the exterior wall?
Yes.
So they're gonna come and remove something that's already been removed? I guess I'm-
No.
Try to clarify it here.
No, no, there's some more boxes that remain in that construction. And E P M will be there, uh, Monday morning and remove the rest of the devices that need to be removed and install, uh, what they need to, to control the items we talked, lights, water heaters, and freezer. And then they'll rewrite the software to control that and take the room air boilers and, uh, convection. The, see, you still have some, uh, controls over to those, uh, convection heaters in the hall with the steam heaters. And those will be, will be removed that are in the way.
But they weren't in the way to begin with. Is that correct? Because nothing was supposed to be removed, is that right?
Well, when they tore out the exterior wall and that were in the way, it went on again.
Yeah.
And that's what we moved down.
Put the windows in, all of the windows had to be torn out, in which meant the room air conditioners would be gone. And, uh, there's a circuit that fed the room air conditioners. And then that part of wiring and conduit to be reused, or it is being reused, to feed the bar units.
So here's another question I have for you, Mr. Malakot. In this contract that E P M, it states that Streets shall disconnect control and wiring of the E P M system and remove any module mounted and equipment to be removed. Should the system interfere with renovation, Streets shall, shall remove sub-sensors. So they're already mentioning Street doing the work, so I guess I don't understand why they're not working together.
No, that, they're still gonna work together. In case, see, E P M's gonna have a crew, uh, there next week, but if there's something that comes up down the road that E P M's crew are not there, rather than having them drive from Fulton, Missouri and show up at Lincoln and charge time for driving, they're just gonna have Street go and haul them out to studying the wire. And then they'll come out one more time, uh, and finish up the loose ends.
So once again, I guess if they're working together, I, I guess I don't understand why this contract can't be signed with Streets. And if we can sweep them down.
Well, Street will, that be removed here, E P M will be removed from Street's job. And they just have an agreement between them that they'll help each other.
Okay. And, uh, on E P M's contract, they're talking about sixty-five thousand, not the sixty-four five, so suddenly jumped up into five hundred. And I know it's just an estimate. I, I know it's an estimate, you say it's gonna be less money, uh, but you also have to understand that we are, have to be visible responsible for our community and our taxpayer money and, um-
I sent one this evening that's signed by Ben Trout, an email that's late in the day that shows sixty-four five.
Okay.
It's in an email, but, uh-
Yeah, I got it right here, sorry, I had a little paper here in front of me.
Okay, sorry.
Does the board have any other questions?
Who's, who's gonna be responsible? For what? I don't know, but-
You know, Mr. Malakot, this is a change in contract and personally I would be more comfortable if we have our attorney kinda look this over, since it's a second, um, contract and it doesn't have anything about, um, you know, in our initial contract, we have liability and all this other stuff involved in there too, and this is just like a one-page proposal that, I don't know what the rest of the board feels like. If that's okay with you, Mr. Malakot, we would like to proceed with having a consultation with our attorney in regards to this.
Yeah, so, you, you, and that's fine, E P M's still gonna show up on the job though to expedite, so we're not holding anything up. They'll, they'll still be there at their own risk and, uh, proceed with getting the work done that they need to.
Okay. And hopefully maybe they can work together and-
Yeah, they will, I'll make sure that happens.
That's the next question that David asked.
Who's gonna be responsible, that's the-
So who is gonna be responsible?
I'm going to make sure they both do their job and approve or disapprove the pay request that they send in.
So that'd be your role as a project manager?
Right.
Okay.
My role as your consulting engineer.
Okay. Okay, well, I appreciate your time this evening, Mr. Malakot.
Alright, if something else comes up, call me, I don't have a-
And anybody else has any questions? Okay.
And I'm gonna be there your, uh, August board meeting, so.
Okay, sounds good, thank you very much.
Alright, alright, thank you.
That's the first time I heard the word project manager. Well, that's-
As we're calling-
That's what you need, that's what you need.
As a project manager, yeah.
So we're here since the Streets can remove that.
Exactly, since Streets can remove the wire.
Sure, Streets can remove that, but that's kinda what started this whole mess, the Streets removed it, correct?
Yes, and whether we sign it or not, they're gonna go ahead and come out and work.
Wouldn't that be between Street and-
Well, that's what I was busy with, yeah.
He was strongly encouraged, initially and all, Mrs. Robertson wanted, you know, possibly have separate contract to separate vendors, was strongly encouraged by Fred that we do one contract, because they work together and they know when the project is so far in demand that they can call E P M to get there. There would be no delays, they'll take the burden off of our superintendent to control all these things. Uh, and now apparently something occurred and they want their own contract.
Whether they're gonna work whether we sign it or not. Coming Monday whether we sign that contract tonight or not, okay.
So anyhow, Mr. Metz, would you be consulting in regards to this?
Well, sure, and I've digested the two that Dr. Sommers brought to me today and there's definitely some reconciliation that jumps out of those, it has to happen, so. And I didn't know when you wanted to, I, I thought probably I would come to the board meeting, the August board meeting, have an executive session with you to consult with your attorney about the privileged information and, and that may not be soon enough, I don't know if you want it.
That's another week.
Well, just as another week, whether it has to be the night of the second.
And I guess we're gonna be here anyway to kind of make this-
Well, they have the money ready in the contract under Street, so you're gonna pay for Street, we're gonna pay for us.
And that's what I'm saying, what's a week is, oh, that's on here.
Mr. Malakot being here at the August board meeting. If Mr. Metz can be at that, then if, then we have all the key players there, with your board members, your local council, and the engineer who doesn't want to be the project manager.
Yeah, because it's, um, yeah. And I appreciate the work you've done on this, Dr. Sommers, it's just been an extra burden on you to take on this job and have to deal with this, and that's the whole reason I hired, um, one company to take care of the whole thing.
Well, I thank you for getting together tonight, because all of these issues really met, needed board attention. And you know, I'm comfortable with the little pieces that come up, but this one's not.
It makes them wonder if they, it makes them wonder if the E S consulted with a fire alarm company, two thousand nine, two thousand. Anyhow. Okay, we'll bring that back for the next board meeting and thank you.
Slight question, and CJ?
Yes, sir.
On the E P M, are we still gonna be using them for some things? It sounds like.
What it was initially, if we remove the whole system, just to remove the system, everything was, I, actually to add, to connect everything was a hundred twenty-nine thousand, to remove everything was sixty-four thousand. Uh, but if we did not remove it and left it- Uh, but if we did not remove it and let the wires in place to be, if we ever wanted to reconnect the system in the future, it will be a credit on that, on the sixty-four thousand, a certain amount. Um, and if we ever in the future wanted to go back with a central system, whether it's EPM or somebody else, the wires are gonna pull. So.
I just wondered if, but we do use them on other things.
Yes.
The high school is hooked up to EPM.
I was just wondering if they wanted to, if they were trying to keep their fingers in. Or.
Yeah.
Some reason.
Cause currently we have the freezers, the chillers.
The water heaters.
Water heaters.
He keeps saying the outside light.
Yeah, I don't understand that.
They are.
Are they?
It's in the jail.
You control it with the software.
That bunch of the timer switch?
The ones on the poles at the high school I know are.
Okay.
Off that EPM, now here, I don't know which lights.
Okay.
I don't know which ones.
Okay, so I'm moving on to action items. Uh, we take action on hosting back to school breakfast, August twelfth at seven forty-five AM.
I salute.
Thank you, Patty.
One second.
Thank you, Deborah, and discussion? All in favor? Five of them.
Yeah, we were scheduled to start school for me, cause we'll be in Alaska on a cruise.
That I like helping with it.
Uh, next we're gonna take action on the change order for the LES HVAC and window project, and that's in regards to, uh, the addendum one.
Now, who's gonna discuss with them David's plan?
We, make sure we get that, that, remove the brackets and just put it up there.
Okay, so do you and David want to meet with me and the contractors?
When will they be here, next time?
They're here, they're here, and David, we'll just need to set up a meeting with them.
Okay. Um, or if the board wants to, I can just call, um, Anthony or, I was hoping Street Plumbing would be here tonight.
But with Anthony doing.
Or Street, I can call Mike Street, call Street, let them know.
I thought they were supposed, both you and Bryce were going to be here tonight.
Think they couldn't find us?
They're at the school, we're at the school.
Somebody will relate with them and make sure that's the plan.
With the new bracket, that would be a dentist name.
That's a later on.
Well, they gotta, they gotta undo it.
So undo it, yeah.
And that's what, yeah.
But they're not gonna.
Right, right.
All right, I'll move that we approved the change request on the honor forty-eight point four four two.
Yeah.
I wanted, I thought this said they both declined, it says they both declined, but would answer any questions with a phone call. They felt that TJ's idea, I was in the midst of the lemonade black moon. Issue that just came and I debated it clearly. Do you want to call? If we're past discussion, can you call them at this point in time?
Who you're gonna call?
Yeah, I can, I can just call them later, I can call them tomorrow. Well, tomorrow's Saturday isn't it?
They would be glad to answer questions with a phone call. If TJ's ideas were fully described and our change order sum reflected a minimal budget change. Sorry, I read that wrong.
Yeah, that's okay.
That's okay.
Yeah, that came as a text to you from?
That came as an email this afternoon when I was over talking with another contractor.
We can call them after board meeting.
Because when I talked to Susan at noon, she thought Mike Street was gonna be here.
Okay.
And I asked her to confirm that and then I do apologize, I'm so sorry.
I got, I got Mike Street's phone number, I can call him tomorrow morning, so I won't bother tonight.
And you understand what David was talking about?
Yes.
Because I don't, I'm, I'm lost in that one.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And I, I wasn't understanding what you could do with it.
Thank you, Gina, so your motion by Deborah, second by Gina, the USD two ninety-eight, approve the change order for the HVAC and window project. And in regards to rerouting the ductwork and putting it at the same height in front of the stage as in front of the bleachers. All is in favor? Any discussion at that point? Five of them.
So may I ask a question, then you check, you'd accept whatever cost even if it's a little bit more than this four thousand? I can approve that change.
It shouldn't be, shouldn't be.
Okay.
Uh, because actually the only thing that they're gonna do is it's already at the right height, it doesn't turn nine degrees, go up with an elbow. So it's already at the right height.
The one on the west wall down.
It should be cheaper because you wouldn't have to, yeah, drop it down.
Yes.
So. Okay. Uh, we're gonna move right on to negotiations. Uh. Yes. We're gonna table, they'll take action on EPM contract. Good point.
Okay. Will that turn to board meeting?
Yes, we'll table that at the next board meeting for further discussion. We're gonna put that as a discussion item too.
Okay.
So next we have executive session for negotiations, uh, what do you think?
You pick this time, the last time I didn't do it.
And now you're doing negotiations, you're gonna do my stuff.
I got some stuff, something to gather.
Just information, yeah.
Okay.
Five minutes, yep.
How about fifteen minutes, thirteen? Yeah, puts you fifteen minutes. I need a motion going to executive session for fifteen minutes.
Agreed.
Thank you, David. Second. Thank you, Gina. The motion by, uh, David, seconded by Gina, to USD two ninety-eight Board of Education, going to executive session at seven oh five for fifteen minutes with superintendent for the purpose of, um, discussing matters related to employer, employee negotiations, whether or not in causation with representative or representatives of the body or agency. And at the board of, uh, board return to open meeting at seven twenty. In this regard, the executive session is required to protect the district's rights to the confidentiality of its negotiating position and the public's interest. All is in favor? Five of them.